All righty, we will now do our invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation shall be by the illustrious board member Evelyn Ware Jackson, in the absence of board member Lannis, and then the pledge will be by school board member Michael Goday.
All right, please rise. Father, we come to you today, Lord God, and ask you, Lord, to guide us, Lord, as we deliberate over the items on the agenda, Father. We pray that you give us guidance, Lord God, and have us move, Lord God, on items that are in the best interest of our children, Lord God, and the best interest of our district, Lord God. We thank you and praise you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please repeat with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Moving forward with call to order and roll call. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District nine, President Tatman. District four, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis. District three, Mr. Howard. District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Present.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Bernard. We have a call.
Moving forward with an update from the superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. So summer updates, I'm sorry, our updates for October. As many of you know, this is red ribbon month, and I'm sure you may have noticed all of the red ribbons around our trees in the boardroom here. October is red ribbon month because it is drug prevention month. The district works with our high care team to recognize this for the entire month. October is also bully prevention month, so we want to continue to raise awareness around these important issues as we continue to work around with staff and also with our schools. I also wanted to share about magnet mania that happened over Saturday. We had over 1,000 people attend magnet mania this past weekend at the Raising Cane Center. This event was an amazing showcase of our various magnet programs and all they have to offer. There were student performance, games, and the very popular self-station, where attendees took pictures to support their schools of choice. We want to announce that we're going to have an upcoming event, which is called Bridging the Gap. We are going to hold a press conference this Tuesday, October 11th at 9:00 a.m. to announce our collaboration with Apple and the 100 Black Men of Metro Baton Rouge. This collaboration will provide technology resources that will help close the digital divide for students and provide mentoring supports to address students' literacy and educational needs. Last but not least, finally, we'd like to remind everyone that the district will be closed on Monday, October 10th, and Tuesday, October 11th, for fall break. Regular operating hours will resume on October 12th. And that is my report. Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Superintendent. Moving forward with item C1, Call for Election. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of a resolution to call for election of the renewal of property taxes on March 25, 2023. Can I get a motion? Moved by Goday, seconded by Baloo. Seeing no requests to speak, any public comment? Baloo is the second. All right, back to the board. Board member Dyson.
I just wanted to point out that this is a renewal and not any kind of a new tax, and that we are going to the people for this approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward with item C2, Land Purchase. So, oh, I'm sorry, Jesus, look, trying to beat that nine o'clock. Okay, okay, I gotta say it, huh? Madam Secretary, please call.
No, you have to go to the public for comment.
I did.
You did? You did? Okay.
Please vote.
Yes, all right.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward with item C2, Land Purchase, South Baton Rouge Property. Consideration of a request for the approval of the execution of a purchase agreement for the purchase of land in the southern part of the parish and to authorize the general counsel and board president to execute any and all documents to finalize the purchase of that property. All right, first by Goday and seconded by Dyson. Board member Dyson, is that for the previous item, the request to speak, or is that for this particular one? Okay, I didn't clear it, no problem. The first was Goday and the second was Dyson. No problem. Board member Ware Jackson.
A quick question around the property where the old school was torn down at Jefferson Elementary. What are our plans for that property? Do we have something that...
Nothing permanent. I know that we've been sort of talking with Breck about a possible CEA, Collaborative Endeavor Agreement of some sort.
I thought so.
But it's not firm. It's something that they're looking into first. We'll let them give us a proposal, and then we'll bring something to you guys once we have something concrete. But we're working on an agreement of some sort that will benefit both us and Breck with that piece of property and potentially some others.
Okay, thanks. I've gotten some questions from people who lived in that area, so I thought it would be good if we...
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
At the board meeting. Thank you.
Board colleague, Goday.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. I just wanted to thank some people who have worked on this very hard. I know President Tatman and Member Connie Bernard have worked very hard with Breck. I want to give a shout out to the Breck Committee for working with us. I think this is the first of a lot of these types of collaborations we can get into. If you read through the stuff, the concept here is going to be a school in a park. So we'll have a large park with a school sitting in the middle of it, which will give a lot of area and things for activities, and I hope this is the first of many. And lastly, I'd like to give a quick shout out to Mr. George Kurtz, because he has been tireless in his work of pulling these together and working with us on this. So this is a moment I think a lot of us have been waiting for. It's an area where we vastly are in need of putting up a building. So I just wanted to thank some of the people involved, and I'm sure I've left some out. General counsel for one, but I'm sure I've left some out. But I'd just like to congratulate the work that they've done. Thank you.
Board colleague Dyson.
Yes, I too would like to just give a shout out, and I think I'd add Judith. Judith...
I knew it.
What's her last name? Anderson? Into that, kudos to her as well. And, you know, this is taking, this partnership building that we're doing in our district right these days is just certainly a wonderful thing, and it's a win-win for everyone involved. Our community will be improved by this, and I very much appreciate the work that has gone into it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any requests to speak from the public on this item? Seeing no requests to speak, no public comment, excuse me. Back to the board, seeing no further requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. Madam Secretary, I mean, Madam Vice President, can we do a roll call?
Okay.
Do we need to, or you want to? Okay. The motion carries.
All right, moving forward with item C3, Memorandum of Understanding, Our Lady of the Lake University. Consideration of a request for the approval of an MOU between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Our Lady of the Lake University to provide MSW students an opportunity for practical experiences in the area, Masters of Social Work students, excuse me, opportunity for practical experiences in the area of social work. Can I get a motion? Board member Ware Jackson and board member Dyson. Seeing no requests to speak from the board, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, back to the board. Seeing no requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C4, Memorandum of Understanding, Collaborative Classrooms. Consideration of a request to speak for the approval of an MOU between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Collaborative Classrooms for a pilot to include systematic instruction on phonological awareness, phonics, and sight words program, the SIPs program. Can I get a motion?
Yes.
Board member Dyson and board member Ware Jackson. Board colleague Mark Baloo.
Thank you. This looks interesting, and we don't get to hear from Dr. Lashley too often. I'd like to hear just a little bit about this program.
Dr. Lashley, could you please come up?
Vice President, board members, Dr. Narcisse. I'll pull it down. Okay, good afternoon. Yes, the collaborative classroom is a program that will actually address something that we are very excited about. We have gathered data around the dyslexia implications within our schools, so we know those students that have those implications, we have those numbers. And so, school by school. So what we'll do with this collaborative, which we're excited because it is a free pilot, and we are going to, our next step with this will be to pull out which schools we're going to work with, which teachers, which students, perhaps those that have the highest level at first, so that we can take this to scale. But we'll be able to do a personalized learning plan for those students that show these characteristics of dyslexia, and so we're excited about this. There'll be small group instruction, and so we have begun that. As soon as we get the results from tonight, we'll begin pulling out those schools and start working with schools on that.
All right, well, thank you.
Board member Dyson.
I just cannot tell you how thrilled I am to be getting this program tried in our district. We need it at every single school, including our dedicated magnet schools. We have, for years, I've known that we've had an unidentified population of, sizable population of students with reading challenges. And I remember when mine were young, being told by a principal, you know, well, you just, you know, you live in the wrong part of town, you're not going to get that. And, you know, I was like, but that's not acceptable, you know, when a child needs help. And so, lots of remediation and all. But to catch this early and be on it with these children that need additional supports is just going to really help our children grow in ways that they have not. I remember her telling me that phonics was no longer in, that it was all about these hundred sight words, and if they would just get these hundred sight words learned, that that would be what would be needed. And I said, no, we've got to have phonics too. And so I am thrilled about this, and I thank you for bringing it forward and the work that you're doing with our literacy department.
Board colleague Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. This is very timely. Just had a conversation last night with some parents who were talking about dyslexia and the fact that there's so many kids that are undiagnosed. We, you know, we really don't have a really good screening process, but also that parents don't know what to look out for. So I'm wondering if, within this program, we'll be able to include some kind of way for parents to get benefit from this, so that they will be able to recognize some of the symptoms, because it's not just about seeing things a different way or, you know, having letters flipped or numbers flipped. There are other things that are involved in that. And then another point I wanted to make was around the importance of phonics. I mean, you know, I just couldn't believe that we didn't have that anymore, because when my daughter was in school, she did really well in first and second grade and then third grade. There was this big divide, and I found out later through tutoring that I had to put her through to get her caught up, was that it was about phonics. So once we got that straight, you know, she was an AB student throughout the rest of her school year. So I appreciate that. And if, I don't know if Dr. Lashley can address that first question around what kind of parental input we'll have or anything that we can share with parents so that they will be able to recognize some of the symptoms of dyslexia and be able to support their children.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, we will. We've been able to pull out, as we continue to screen. So we took parts of the screening from our benchmark data and found where those places were, where the kids were, and we actually have by school how many students we have, and then we'll have the names of those students. So after we go through the other screening with collaborative classrooms, it'll dig deeper into that. We'll get a personalized learning plan for each student that we can share with parents, giving them some strategies at home. And the one thing we want to do is we want to really change the narrative around, you know, dyslexia, because we know that even students have to have a certain IQ before they can even qualify to be dyslexic.
Yeah, many of them are brilliant.
They are brilliant. And so we are finding ways that we can work. It's just bringing heightened teachers' awareness and parents and everyone that works with them to know where the characteristics are, how to spot them initially, and then what to do with them in those small groups. So we will share that with parents.
Thank you, that's great news.
Parent engagement.
Great news. Thank you so much.
Board colleague Jill Dyson.
Yes, I was going to request that, as soon as you...
I'm sorry, colleague Dyson, we reverting back to old practices and patterns.
We get that data.
Good way to sneak it in. All right.
Thank you.
Any, oh yeah, item four. For public comment, Star Matthews.
I was so excited when I saw this MOU. When Common Core came in, that's when phonics left the district, and that's when our reading scores dumped and dropped. We absolutely 100% need phonics and phonemic awareness, but we need it for every child. We also absolutely need something for the dyslexic children in this parish, but every child needs phonics. So can we do both, please, pretty please? Like, I wrote my comments before Dr. Lashley came up, so they have nothing to do with dyslexia, because that's not mentioned in the MOU. Also, I was going to ask which two schools, but she explained that. You can't have a foundation of reading without the phonics and phonological awareness. There are a lot of the veteran teachers that sneaked it in and tried to get away with still teaching it, but it became increasingly more difficult. Now, the MOU does say that even though it's only going to be in two schools, that they are allowing other school leaders to attend the PDs that are going to be offered at the piloted schools. So I do strongly recommend for all of our leaders to do that, because we absolutely do need, I mean, I hope the program is good as well, but we absolutely do need the phonics. We do need the phonological awareness. And for to answer questions about dyslexia, all second grade students are screened for dyslexia in this district.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests, excuse me, seeing no other public comment on this item, back to the board. And my colleague Jill Dyson so skillfully snuck her comment in already. So seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C5, Professional Services Contract Federal. Consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services contracts between East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following notable incorporated in the amount of $63,378.15 to provide an online annotation system. Item C5B, Instruction Incorporated in the amount of $31,641 to provide an online learning management system. C5C, Keys to Literacy in the amount of $32,400 to provide professional development to improve teacher proficiencies and skills in literacy. Can I get a motion? Board colleague Baloo and board colleague Lannis. Seeing no requests to speak from the board. I have a public comment card from Star Matthews.
I think this needs to be separated. Cammy, yes, this day and age, we all need it, we all use it, we sign with it. Kids can fill out, when they're out with COVID, they can complete worksheets or whatever workbook that we're doing. They can complete those assignments via online. Canvas, we don't use Canvas. None of us use it, so why pay that much money for Canvas? Also, while we are supposed to be getting ready to somehow have $27 million for the magical teacher raise next year, we might want to start being a little bit more fiscally responsible with what money we do have. So if we're not using Canvas as a regular basis, what we're using is Google, what we're using is Teams, then why are we going to pay this much money for a program that we are not using on a regular basis?
Where is the Canvas? Help me understand what a Canvas is on here, on this item. Is which one? Okay, I'm sorry, I'd like to be informed. Okay. Seeing no other public comment, back to the board. Seeing no other, board colleague Baloo.
Yes, since I'm not familiar with that, what was it?
Canvas.
Could somebody respond to that, just so I can understand?
Yes, we could do that. Canvas is a platform. Dr. Robinson, could you please come up? Our chief academic officer can explain Canvas. We actually do use that across the system.
Good evening, Board Chair, Tatman in his absence, Vice President Cat Collins, and two other board members and Dr. Narcisse. We do use Canvas significantly in the district, especially accountability, various departments, H R, a lot of the documents that we use, they are housed in Canvas. So it is definitely something that, because there was some conversation to Ms. Matthews's point, we were looking at Google and and Canvas. We still use Google Classroom, which is the platform that students use when they are turning in assignments and those types of things. There are some rare occasions where Canvas professional development is placed there, but for other departments within the system, we significantly use it a lot. So we would need to maintain it. I wanted to make sure that we are fiscally sound, but that is something that we definitely need.
All right. Well, thank you.
Board colleague Ware Jackson.
My question is kind of around the different uses of nades. You know, we've got instructor here and Canvas there. And if we could just be a little consistent with, you know, with whatever the term is or whichever name is more familiar, because, you know, we're looking for. She was talking about Canvas. I'm looking at the items.
Instructor is called, that's the company. It's Canvas.
Okay, instructor is the company, but Canvas is.
It's the platform.
The platform. I see. I see. Thank you.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward at the amazing timestamp of 5:31 with item C six. Professional Services Contract General Fund. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract, services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Louisiana Association for the Deaf Doing Business as Deaf Focus in the amount of $30,000 to provide sign language services. Board colleague Dyson and the second from board colleague Ware Jackson. Seeing no requests to speak from the board and seeing, this is six. Seeing no public comment submitted for item C six. Coming back to the board, seeing no requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item six, excuse me, C seven elimination, eliminated job descriptions. The recommended action is consideration of a request for the approval to eliminate the obsolete job descriptions as referenced in the document. Eliminated job descriptions. Motion. Board colleague Lanis and board colleague Goday. Seeing no request to speak from the board and seeing no public comments submitted. Oh, I'm sorry. Star Matthews. Okay, waived. Back to the board, board colleague Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ms. Hall, could you come to the mic for a second? I won't keep you long, I promise. Yes, so in reading the document, I see that we are now on round three of job eliminations. I was just curious, how many jobs, titles have we eliminated thus far?
169.
169 job titles. So we've had those titles on our books for?
The last maybe 40 years.
And there was money allocated for those salaries also?
No, those are positions that don't have any job descriptions attached to them.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I want.
All right, back to the, okay, seeing no other requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C eight, revised salary schedule. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the revised 2022-23 salary schedule. Can I get a motion? Board colleague Goday and board colleague Lanis. Board colleague Goday.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Ms. Hall, could you please come back up? Could you, because I tried to read through this and started getting lost. Could you just briefly tell us what is going on? What's the purpose of this and and what is going on and how does all this mesh together?
Yes, so I try to be as succinct as possible because I know it's a lot, it's a heavy lift. So what we've been trying to do, we're doing it in phases. So the job descriptions that you guys have a super awesome need approved to be eliminated, updated, or added new. I went ahead and add them and update them or eliminate them from the current salary schedule that was approved in June, June. So this is the, this is the process.
So this isn't really changing anything. This is, this is bringing it up to date with the descriptions that are eliminated.
Amended.
And the ones that are amended or added or whatever.
Correct. And I embedded those job descriptions within the backup so you could track the ones that were board approved to the current document that you have in front of you.
That tracking. No, no, I know you did the best you could, and, you know, I don't really want to get that much in the weeds. I just wanted everyone to understand this isn't a change or anything like that. This is just an amendment to make it mirror the actions we've already taken.
Correct.
So I just wanted to be clear for everybody. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Seeing no requests to speak from the board and seeing no public comment. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C nine, recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of a cooperative endeavor agreement between East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and East Baton Rouge North Economic Development District to receive an allocation of $50,000 to provide at-risk or disconnected youth the opportunity to participate in the school board's dual enrollment culinary arts program. Board colleague Lanis and board member, board colleague Goday. Board colleague Baloo.
I just wanted an explanation of how this works and what what role the Baton Baton Rouge North Economic Development District will play in playing this.
Shamlin.
Yeah. This is a C E A essentially. The district, when I say district, not E B R, but the district referring to the other party actually will give us an amount of $50,000. The scope of services for us is outlined in the document. The primary purpose, without going into the details of each bullet, is to provide at-risk students with opportunities in the culinary arts program, which is part of our opportunities for kids and the superintendent's dual enrollment initiative, et cetera. So this is actually us receiving funding to provide a scope of services that benefits kids at risk in that particular area.
All right, that's, that's, sounds great. Thanks.
All right. Board colleague Lanis.
Thank you again, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to take a second to thank Dr. James Gilmore. He was very adamant about making this agreement happen for the school district and just using the Baton Rouge North Economic Development District as a catalyst for our school district and connecting at-risk students with programming that they actually want to be a part of. As we know, every student is not going to go to college. Every student does not want to go into some of the industries that we're looking at, but there are some students that want to probably do barbering. There are some students that want to do, you know, cosmetology, that want to go into cooking, culinary arts. So again, kudos to the Baton Rouge North Economic Development District, Dr. James Gilmore and his entire team. Thank you.
Board colleague Goday.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Collins. I just wanted to echo what my colleague just said. I want to thank the North Baton Rouge Economic Development District for partnering with us. And just to highlight that this is another example. We just talked about the Breck a little while ago. This is another example where the school district is trying to reach out and and work with community resources to provide better opportunities for our children in all different areas. And, you know, this, I hope, is just the first of many more, or the second of many more of what we talked about. Because we have, Dr. Narcisse has said earlier, Baton Rouge has an amazing number of resources, and the more we can gather those and bring them into the benefit of our students, the better off we are. So I applaud all the efforts for for this district team, the district meeting, the school board district team, and also the North Baton Rouge Development District team for bringing this together for the benefit of our students. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much to North Development Economic District and seeing no requests, oh, Star Matthews.
I just had one question about the eight items in the scope. So they're giving us $50,000, correct? But it's to cover the commercial kitchen equipment, the cooking utensils, and A seven, purchase of uniforms for all students, in addition to some other things, but those are really the major things. Have we double-checked the pricing on how much the scope of those things are going to cost in addition? I really like the program. I like the dual enrollment aspect of it and getting those credentials. But the upgrading of the commercial kitchens and things of that nature. I wanted to make sure that we did the the before work of how much things are going to cost before we just said, oh, they're going to hand us $50,000 and thought that that was a done deal.
All right. Seeing no other requests, excuse me, seeing no other public comment and seeing no other requests to speak from the board. Madam Secretary, please call the vote. Oh, yes, yes. Okay.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C ten, policies and policy revisions. Recommended action, consideration of a request for the approval of the following school board policies, policy revisions and related matters. We have policy B E, school board ethics. Policy E D D, school bus scheduling and routing. Policy G AAA, equal opportunity employment. Policy GAMB, employee dress code. Policy J AA, equal education opportunities. Policy JCDB, student dress code. Policy G B R I B, sick leave. Policy JCDAH, hazing. Policy JCDAF, bullying. Policy IDDFA, Special Education Advisory Council. Policy IDDFC, cameras and special education classrooms. Policy JQA, expectant and parenting students. Policy JBD, student absences and excuses. Policy JD, discipline. Policy JGC, student health services. Policy JGCD, administration of medication. And policy JM, student voter registration. Can I get a motion? Moved by board colleague Howard and seconded by board colleague Goday. Star Matthews for for public, oh, let me make sure. Board colleague Goday.
Yes, thank you. On, just one question on the bus transportation. I I read through the thing and and I understand it all, but do I know by law we are required to provide bus transportation for private school students under certain conditions? Do we have a policy that addresses that?
I don't believe it's in our policy. I'll check for you. I don't have it in front of me. There's state law that lays out the requirements and guidelines for a private school to receive transportation.
I I would make a request that you research that. And I think we ought to have a board policy that says how we will implement state law for that. Because I just think, right now, I don't know how, you know, how to interpret it. I don't want to have to go interpret the state law every time someone asks a question about it or whatever. So I think it'd be good for us to have a policy.
I will.
As it relates to that.
We'll get with our.
No hurry, no hurry on that, but I just think good order would say we need a policy. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Board colleague Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I know the general public is always interested in policy changes, and I'm wondering if there are really any significant changes in the policies. And Mr. Shamlin, if you could address that and just kind of highlight some things and let us know if there are any major changes.
Yes, ma'am. Well, there are numerous this time, all of it coming out of our legislative changes in the 2022 regular session. I won't go into every detail. Some of these changes are minor edits to to a policy to align it with state law, changes in state law, but I will try to stick to the major ones as I kind of go through this. Policy B E, school board, school board ethics deals with the hiring of an immediate family member of a school board member, the superintendent, and their and their promotion into an administrative position and certain requirements there. Requiring an employee that had been employed by the school board for at least one year prior. And so there's some some additional requirements that are put into place. There are significant, not significant, but changes that affect three policies. Policies GAAA, equal employment opportunity, GAMB, employee dress code, and JAA, equal education opportunities. All those changes track with requirements to ban or prohibit discrimination against any in-person or employee on the basis of cultural hairstyle. And so that is new state law that we now reflect in these policies and will eventually track the changes in the student handbook, which will occur next year. But we will provide guidelines to schools and to schools ahead of the student handbook changes to make sure that that we adhere to those policy changes. There's a change in the sick leave policy, which is minor, but allow requires that with emergencies or special circumstances, that those be placed in writing by the employee to the superintendent describing the special circumstance or emergency caused by the employee's absence. The dates that the employee was absent or will be absent due to that circumstance and the anticipated return of work date. An excuse must also be signed by the employee. So it just puts in place some additional requirements there. There's a new hazing policy, which is connected to the bullying amendments to state law this year. In addition, there are changes to the bullying law, so the bullying requirement, the bullying policy has been rearranged and reorganized, and some edits made to the language to align more closely with state law. The basic requirements are still in place, but we now have a hazing policy we're proposing as well. The Special Education Advisory Committee change primarily is it now allows for at least a 50% composition on the board rather than the 50% composition on the board. And I don't have the the classes there, but that change is tracks with state law as well. The committee won't change just how we compose, how we compose the makeup of the committee will. we compose the makeup of the committee will. The, a big, a big new policy requirement this year, and I see you nodding, is the certain cameras in certain special education classrooms. And so I will say that our staff, our district, our Deputy Chief of Policy, our ESS Department, Mr. Smith, Dr. Harris, and others have worked tirelessly to come up with protocols to support this policy. We are now required by state law, put cameras in place in certain special education classrooms at the request of a parent. There are certain ways that camera can and cannot be used. Our protocol lays that out, and so does the policy. I won't go into detail there. But essentially, those cameras are there for purposes unrelated to IEP needs, et cetera. And so that is a new policy that we're rolling out based on state law. There's also some funding allocations coming from the state that will allow us to put that in place.
Okay, good.
As long as that funding is, is, is available, we're required to comply.
Great.
Okay. We have a new policy, JQA, and amendments to policy JBD, which is student absences. This is related to expectant and parenting students. And so there are now requirements around what we should allow with regard to absences related to students who are expecting. And so that is now also in policy. There's some minor changes to our discipline policy, just in wording. Student Health Services, there are changes in the Student Health Services policy related to students with seizure disorders, and parents and legal guardians of students with a seizure disorder may now submit a seizure management and treatment plan to the school administration for use by employees. There's also an Administration of Medication Amendment now requiring the supply of auto-injectable epinephrine to be in a secure location in every classroom with a student who has that need. And then we have a new policy, Student Voter Registration, which, which lays down requirements around when and how we can allow student voter registration on school campuses.
Great.
That is it.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment on item C10, Star Matthews, then Coranda Corley.
We get 10 days of sick leave. Then we can apply for extended sick leave. If we miss more than five days, we are required to have a doctor's note verifying, certifying why we were out. There's already something in place verifying why we are using sick time if it's more than a cold, if it's more than, oh, I just got something real quick and then I'm back. So having something in place that we would have to submit, and Superintendent Narcisse, you have, what, 6,000 employees, something like that? I'm pretty sure he doesn't want 6,000 pieces of paper from everybody every time something happens in this district. That is an over, that's ridiculous. It's outright ridiculous. And I find it pretty funny that it came right in line with the bullying and hazing. Not saying that he's bullying, but that's, that is a ridiculous policy. And I know the other ones are in line with state law. And I'm wondering if that one is in line with the state law as well because everything else, we already have to verify with a doctor's excuse why we are out. I know because I have lots of doctor's excuses that I have to turn in. So that is overkill. It's ridiculous. We're adults. We hold degrees. We're professionals. We don't get paid like it. But for God's sake, can you at least treat us like it?
Well, see there, in the spirit of being a school system making
Waste of my time, Ms. April.
Welcoming our parents to participate in the process. And sometimes that means with the children. And look at what we have. Our favorite child here, and he has headphones on this time. He gonna be able to help his mama participate without all that noise.
That's a hopefulness. He shakes them off. He was shaking them off a few minutes ago. But good afternoon, Board. First and foremost, when it comes to policies and policy revisions, a lot of our policies and policy, that policies that are revised are not in the benefit of all students. So let me give you an example. We are revising a policy that correlates for harassment, but we never look at disability harassment. Of course, I have to speak and be truthful to who I am. My child have a disability, and disability harassment does exist and has been on the rise throughout this state. We also need to look at policies that are in existence for the entire student body. When it comes to uniforms, schools such as Baton Rouge High and Lehigh do not wear uniforms, but all of the other schools do. That's called discrimination. We cannot have segregated policies that are going to impact and affect some schools, but not impact and affect all. So when I talk about these policies that we are creating, we have to make sure that the policies is going to be something that's beneficial to all students, such as a uniform policy that makes sure that we allow our children with disabilities that may have sensory processing to actually be able to wear shoes and uniforms that are in accommodate, that are accommodating to that sensory processing. To give you an example, my child cannot wear a lot of shirts that actually have tags within the inside. So he wears a lot of Ralph Lauren products because instead of them having tags, they actually have the actual size and information printed in the shirt instead of a tag. So those are things that are accommodations for our individuals with disabilities that unfortunately our policies do not embrace. I do thank you for the policy dealing with cameras in the classroom because it is needed. And the one thing that I do ask in regards to the cameras in the classroom policy is that you make it that it goes into effect immediately today so that our families of individuals with students with disabilities that are in our self-contained classes can actually benefit from those cameras immediately, especially since our school system received $500,000 due to my advocacy. So I do ask that we do that and we implement that immediately, immediately. And I do think that we should, we could act, we have an opportunity to be in the forefront and actually put cameras in all the classrooms. It'll be beneficial because then we could see how some of these fights are actually starting and what's leading up to it. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other public comment. Madam, and, Mad, Board Colleague Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I would like either the superintendent or Mr. Shamlin to address that question around all of the reporting for sick leave and, you know, those different pieces of, of paper in this, in this policy revision. Is this a requirement that's from the state or is this is something that is local?
I believe this is an additional requirement we put in place, and this applies to emergency and special circumstances. So it's not every sick leave situation. But I think, and I can, we can let HR speak to more detail to this, but it applies to specifically to emergency and special circumstances. It allows us to document, rather than someone just saying, I have a special circumstance, it requires them to provide additional information, support that, that allegation before leave is, is allowed. And so we can let HR speak to that a little more specifically, but it's pretty, the language is pretty clear. It's not against state law. It's not a requirement of state law, but it'll make our policy, I guess, the administration of leave work easier for our HR staff.
Yeah, any clarity we can, we can have for the rest of the employees would be helpful.
All right. Seeing no other request. Oh, Board Colleague Goday.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that. You know, when I read this, and I want to make sure I'm getting it correctly, this only applies to emergencies and special circumstances. And all it requires is whoever is requesting emergency or special circumstances just write out what it is and sign it and turn it in. There's no doctor, there's no anything to it. It's just a documentation by the person requesting what was the special circumstance or emergency.
That's correct.
Okay. So I don't find that very burdensome at all. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Moving forward with item C11, Resolution Day of Hope Investigation. Recommended action in consideration of a request for the adoption of a resolution directing General Counsel to conduct an investigation and provide a report to the board on issues related to the Day of Hope event, and set a public hearing to allow public comment and feedback on the Day of Hope event. The resolution reads, "Resolution to Investigate Constituent Concerns Regarding Day of Hope 2022. A resolution of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board requesting the General Counsel of East Baton Rouge Parish School Board to conduct a fact-finding investigation regarding concerns expressed by constituents about the Day of Hope event facilitated by East Baton Rouge Parish School System, the system, on September 20, 2022." Whereas the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, the Board, has heard constituents' concerns expressed via social media, news reports, and our emails regarding the Day of Hope event that raises concerns about transparency. Whereas the Board received a letter from the American Civil Liberties Union highlighting three areas of legal concern based on constituents' issues, namely discrimination based on gender, discrimination against transgender students, and school-based, school-sponsored, excuse me, promotion of religion. Whereas the Board values the rights of all constituents regardless of gender, sex, or religious belief. Whereas the Board seeks to ensure an accurate fact-finding investigation. Whereas if the actions and events described in constituents' complaints are accurate and may violate law or policy, the Board makes clear it does not agree with any such, such actions. Whereas the Board seeks to prevent future, any future violations of law or policy. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board requests assistance from General Counsel in a fact-finding investigation into the concerning events alleged by constituents to have taken place during the Day of Hope event. And the Board requests an expeditious report from General Counsel of his findings to help the Board quickly work to prevent any future occurrences of any allegations found to be factual. Can I get a motion? Board Colleague Ware Jackson. Can I get a second? Board Colleague Lannis. Board Colleague Dyson.
I just had a quick question. And it was my understanding that we already are doing an investigation. So I just was, just trying to get clarity on that. We, we are already doing an internal and, and we're, we're trying to, a fact-finding right now, right?
That is correct, Board Member Dyson. Mrs. Shamlin, would you mind sharing with the Board what steps we've taken so far already?
Well, I have to, I can't share a whole lot because of the nature of the work. But I've been asked to look into the matter in detail. I've actually secured the services of special counsel to assist with that. And the process has begun. And so I expect we'll have a report of some sort to the Board. I don't want to put a time limit in place. I know that the, the resolution says expeditiously, but as soon as we can, we can do so, we'll do it. Superintendent is interested in this because he wants to prevent any future issues. And this will give him information to help him to accomplish that. And that's essentially where we are.
Well, that's what I thought. And that's why I just was unsure about the need for this resolution, because I thought we were already doing these things and taking these steps. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
As General Counsel just stipulated, first and foremost, he was responding to the superintendent's desires. The purpose of the resolution is to show the position of the Board. The resolution not only asks for an investigation, but it also makes statements and makes it clear that the Board itself is not interested in any, if anything is found to be factual, then the Board would like to express that it wants to work towards ensuring in the power of the Board that it doesn't happen in the future. So that's the purpose of the resolution. And also to say, as a Board, that we don't, that we don't agree with any violations and discrimination based on gender, discrimination against transgender students, or any school-sponsored promotion of religion, which are violations of law. Board Colleague Blue.
I just wanted clarification because Superintendent Narcisse, I've read your public statement. And it's my understanding that you've responded to all, all inquiries and looked into it. Who was responsible for doing, I know you said Mr. Shamlin. Was he overseeing the response to any complaints?
Yes. Yeah, Board Member, we've actually, as Mr. Shamlin shared, we actually have external counsel that we have to actually look at over complaints. As we've been sharing with the public, we have not found anything as of yet. We cannot get more specifics. What we have heard has been adults saying, here's what has happened. But talking to children and engaging in, can't give more specifics around that as the investigation is going. But we have not had any facts in terms of events of what has been claimed to happen as of right now.
All right. Well, that, thank you.
Board Colleague Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I believe that it's really important that we have transparency in our communications and marketing, and that when we market a product, that we actually provide that and so that we can stand behind everything that we're doing. And I believe that our role when we're looking at policies and procedures is to make sure that our Board and, and the administration is following, that we are following our policy, our policies and procedures. And in particular, in this area, in the area of setting up a field trip, I'd like to make sure that all of the procedures and necessary steps were followed. I'm wondering about whether all of the departments that should be involved in this whole process were actually involved in this, especially with regard to nutrition, whether our kids were provided brown bag lunches. And if not, we need to know what kinds of safeguards we can put in place to protect the district and especially our students when we partner on an education event. As an event that is marketed as a college and career fair, I would believe that we would make sure that the focus is on college and career readiness for our students, especially when they're out of school for the whole school day and expecting to see this. So it's really important to me that when we look at what we're doing in the district and we market and make sure that we communicate properly and that we provide the product that we say that we're going to provide. You know, our, our word is our bond, and what we communicate is really important, especially when we put our logos on products and our slogans. So especially, you know, this was meant to be an education, an educational event. And these kids are looking to college and career and getting ready to, to get out of high school and expecting that they're going to get exactly what we promote. So it's important that we really look at our process in our, in our field trips and just make sure that all of the steps are in place. And, because we've never seen anything like this happen as, as far as all of the backlash that, that we seem to be getting in the media, both locally and, and nationally, and even from, from Canada, from some of the, the things that I've seen. So it's been pretty disturbing, and it's been a lot of hearsay. So I'm looking forward to getting this information and putting in place safeguards that will keep us out of the situation again.
Board Colleague Lannis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Trying to, I guess, gather the thought around all of this. I wasn't actually at the event, but there are two certainties that I I wasn't actually at the event, but there are two certainties that I want to address and express tonight. The first, I think, is the most important, is expressing that this school system does not discriminate against students based on gender. That is our policy, that is what we stand by, and that is what we uphold every single day throughout our schools. This is an incident that happened, and it can happen at any time, because this, we are an ever-changing world, a lot of our policies are going to change based on those changes in society and our world, and we do have some catching up on some certain things, but I would be remiss if I did not state that our school district does not discriminate based on gender. If you look at the bottom of our website, it specifically states the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and all of its entities do not discriminate on the basis of age, race, religion, national origin, disability, or gender in its educational programs or activities. So let that be clear, the very first thing. Number two, in all of this, there is a really good organization that is being completely torn down, and nobody is acknowledging that. And that organization is 2911 Mentor. What I can tell you is this beyond everything, they have been doing this for quite some time. Again, I was not at the facility or the event when those activities took place, but what I can tell you is this, I have seen it firsthand before, and it may not be for every student, but it's for a student throughout our school district. So many kids take away from this event every single year, and it has been growing so much, that's why they wanted to expand it to every student across our district. First, it started off at Bethany, this year was at Living Faith, and they wanted to offer people who may need to have their voices heard, that may need certain attention going towards whatever they may be going through in life. But not to get too far away from the point, a great organization is being torn down, so much so that it has now hit national news, and how do you bounce back from that? Because what I see is irreputable harm that is now taking place from an incident that I think that we could have resolved in-house from our, both our Board and Superintendent as well as our attorney. And I think that that's still steadfast and it's still coming. I just hope that it's something that we can move past as a community, and I just wanted it to be very, very clear again that we do not discriminate against students based on their gender. And if there is anything that comes out that says that we have, I will support those students. But until that happens, I would love for us to have a thorough investigation, and if nothing comes out, at the end of anything, I think that 2911 may deserve an apology, because they are the ones that are taking the biggest lick. They are the ones who have to take all of the brunt of all of the backlash that is going on. While we will continue to go on, this organization may not, they may not continue. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Seeing no other requests to speak from the Board, Karonda Corley?
Well, thank God for me being right on time, right? First and foremost, I would like to comment on Mr. Lannis' comments. So our school system does have on every single thing that we do not discriminate based on sex, gender, and religion, and disability. However, being a parent of a child with a disability and a parent that is a disability's advocate, that's what I've seen. I've always seen discrimination. In fact, we could talk about that. My child just received a teacher for his special ed class on Friday. Friday. My child is in a segregated class based off of his exceptionality. Let's talk about discrimination to the T. We can't sit here and act as if discrimination doesn't happen every single day. We are in the newspaper constantly about teachers and staff members that have some, that discriminate against other students and other individuals based on race, based on nationality, based on religious beliefs. Yes, yes. I know all of our constitutional amendments that says that we have the right to freedom of religious beliefs. However, we are not supposed to impose or force religion on other people. When you have praise and worship at an event, if I was Muslim, that would have been against my belief. If I was Catholic, that would have been against my belief. Church of God in Christ, that's against my belief. Atheists, against my belief. Buddhists, against my belief. And the list goes on and on. Church and state are separate. Federal funding was used, and it's a shame that federal funding can't be used right now to get my child a regular ed teacher, and he's going to be taking leap tests this year. Federal funding is not being used to provide him with medical personnel, but we managed to give up $9,800 when the school system owed me over 10. That's a problem. So when we talk about discrimination, yeah, you discriminate. You discriminate against me as a parent. Let's talk about you called the police on me last year, three times, because I had a Black Lives Matter shirt on. Discrimination. So we not go sit here and pussyfoot around it. That is the truth. Children have rights, and the Office for Special Education under the Department of Ed said they do, and their parents do too. Children were tortured. You may not consider it as torture, but a lot of them have PTSD courtesy of not being used to it. I know some people say they have PTSD when I speak up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'll come back at the redistrict.
Attorney Ronald Haley Jr.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Attorney Ron Haley Jr. I am counsel now for 2911. I wanted first to say this. I think everyone here is pro-student. Everyone here is pro-child, and want to put our children in the best position possible going forward. I believe the mission of my client was just to do that. Now, I think, brother, you said it correctly, that we are in an ever-changing world, that what is acceptable two weeks ago may not be acceptable now, and that there are gaps that need to be filled. But I want to say, on behalf of the organization that I represent, that they don't stand for discrimination either. Nothing that they did during the Day of Hope program was any way in bad faith whatsoever. There was nothing that they did that was misleading to create some type of just religious But we have to be very careful on the slippery slope with the 11th Amendment, separation of church and state. It is very clear that from my time in the school system coming up, that religious organizations sometimes walk step by step with the school boards, either donating things in kind, donating venues, donating all sorts of things. We don't want to be in a position where, cut and dry, we got to take religion, religious organizations completely out of the picture. However, what needs to happen is that we need to update our policies to ensure that, listen, when religious organizations come forward to do certain things, that there are not gaps put in place. Now, I can speak again on behalf of the organization that I've reached out personally to the attorneys for the ACLU, and these are lawyers that I work with jointly in litigation throughout this state and this country, folks that are considered colleagues and friends, and they agreed with me. They do not want the unintended consequence to be that religion cannot help out the public school systems, but that policies need to be put in place. And I spoke to them, I said, listen, this does not need to be a litigated issue. This needs to be something where everyone comes forward to update 21st century policies that are forever changing. I spoke to Mr. Sterling, he indicated he wants to be a part of that conversation. I reached out to the ACLU, they want to be a part of the conversation. And so I'm coming to you today, not as an attorney pushing for litigation or pushing back, I'm coming here with the olive branch on behalf of this organization, on behalf of Mr. Sterling, and say, let's come together, since we're all are pro-children and wanting the best for our children, come together and make sure the policy is in place, that if there are any things in the gap, we can be able to fill them. Thank you very much, sorry for going over my time.
Thank you very much. Brandy Melissa?
Hi, hold on, I'm used to the state legislature stuff. I'm, read this. I'm Brandy, I'm in Code A's district. It's good to see everyone, as much as I wish I could be here on something other than the recent public parish-wide field trip. I grew up in an ultra-conservative home and spent every Sunday morning, every Wednesday night, sometimes Saturday nights, in church, cell groups throughout the week, youth events otherwise. My mom, who succumbed to domestic violence trauma Thanksgiving Eve 2017, supported me going to schools where diversity was obvious versus neighborhood ones at the time that majority resembled me, or even private schools that I had the option to attend. She would have never allowed me to go to a field trip where moral issues were the hot topics, much less where the venue was a church. And I grew up at a major church that y'all just mentioned. Morals were taught by her at home, and other religious views were instilled in me by clergy, who you all would know. I was conceived with sexual violence, but I don't talk about rape beginning my life freely in settings where minors are present, or the brutal abuse inflicted on my mom before, during, and after her pregnancy that negatively impacted us both forever. Everyone, everyone raised in church or not knows with a simple Google search that 2911 comes from the Bible. I'm almost done. Public school students come from all walks of life, not everyone is Christian. I would also never tell a group of students to forgive abusers when the one's viewing that might be clueless to adverse experiences students face in the home where that could trigger unnecessary trauma. At the age of six, I watched my sperm contribute to leave my mom to die. I've had choice words for even well-known clergy who have told me in adulthood to forgive him. Kids who aren't fully able to process things shouldn't be subjected to random people forcing views on them with the blessing of a public school board system. My last words to my mom's abuser were telling him where to go and how to get there. Field trips are not youth group retreats, and I stand by everyone who is standing for every student in this district regardless of their race, religion, or sexual identity. Thank you.
Thank you. Reese Adams?
Okay, good afternoon. I am a 15-year-old student of Southern University Laboratory, and I attended Hope Day. See, when, before Hope Day, well, before I attended Hope Day, I was under the impression that Hope Day was something for the students who needed hope, who needed something, who needed a little push. And me, as a person, I got that push. See, now, I'm a part of the LGBTQ plus community, and I can probably say that. And at the Hope Day, I did not feel that it, that we were discriminated against. I did not feel that as a person of color, I was discriminated against. And as a female, probably so, I did not feel that I was discriminated against. Now, there were three female speakers, and one speaker spoke about how she forgave her abuser. Now, I was sexually assaulted last year at Liberty High School, and they did absolutely nothing, expelled me for it. And Hope Day, and after I was sexually assaulted, I tried three times to commit suicide. Thank God that it didn't work, thank God. But after Hope Day, I came out of that church as a random person. Not saying that God is for everybody, not saying that the church life is for everybody, because there are atheists out here, there are Buddhists and Islamic people, other people, people of different, not Christian, religious beliefs. But, see now, on the flyer for Hope Day, it said that it was held at a church. And to me, I feel as though everyone who signed the flyer to go to Hope Day knew that it was going to be a church-based topic. And so they can't really get mad because it was a church-based topic, and it was held in the church, and it stated that it was going to be in the church. Also, I see something about that the schools did not talk, that the kids did not have enough time or enough place to talk to the schools. I talked to about five different schools and signed up to get notifications from five different schools. So that's out of the picture, because I talked to schools. Um, well, that's it.
Thank you, and thank you for your resilience, and thank you for sharing your story. Evelyn Brand? Oh, I'm sorry. Brode, yes, I thought that was an end. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I've been part of 2911 Day of Hope for about eight years, and as a volunteer, and I can say from my perspective, there wasn't, and there's never any type prejudice at these events. It is a day of hope. It's a day of hope for all the kids. I've attended this year, I mean, we have had thousands, 1,500 kids at Bethany for the last six years, because I manage the inside auditorium, the seating of all the students. And it's not a religious event. It's giving the individuals hope for the future, because if you look at the news of these young people, even adults, you know, we're going to hell in a handbag. I mean, so just giving them some inspiration, some hope for the next day, giving us hope for the next day, because it's not just for the students, a lot of adults participated. There, I mean, the adults that were there, they're not volunteers, the teachers, the drivers, they're sitting down participating and listening, and they are, you know, even up, you know, like I said, participating. So as far as the college and career fair, there are colleges there, there were Army Services there, giving these kids an idea of what to do for the future, for their future lives. It was up to me, I would give them a choice, either go in the military, if they couldn't get a job, or go to college, instead of being on the streets. So you had different arenas, different career services there, for they can talk to to have a plan for the future. And I don't know what the breakdown was as far as the communication to the different schools. I were told, because I know that Mr. Sterling pretty much talks to every schools, he's in the schools. So when it comes to Day of Hope, he's talking to the principals and letting them know what the Day of Hope is. It is not a religious event.
Thank you. Kirsten Robertson?
Good evening, everyone. How are you guys doing today? You know, I was thinking about, if I had this opportunity, what would I say if I was going to defend Day of Hope? Like, what is it really about? And I think Attorney Haley said it the best, we are pro-student. And I want to read you guys something that I looked up today, and I just was shocked. It says, this was reported by WAFB, it says, 37% of students reported feeling sad or hopeless almost every day for their at least two weeks period during last year. 18% of the students were surveyed, reported that they are actually made a plan that they would commit suicide. The part that I want you to focus on is students reported feeling sad and hopeless. Our goal for the last 10 years was to give students hope. What is hope? A great expected end, whatever they're pursuing in their life, whatever dream and goals that they have, we want to give them hope. I also want to comment on the marketing and the Day of Hope. It has always been Day of Hope for the last 10 years, but what we do is something different that has not been done in this city, and a lot of people, when you don't understand something, you have a tendency to reject it. What we do is provide them a hope in different avenues, through college and career fair, through breakout sessions, through, we had 360s there, and the list goes on and on and on. I've heard several times that it was not a college and career fair. And I just want to end with a few facts, okay? So, let's just talk about facts. Over the years of Day of Hope, colleges that have been present, LSU, BRCC, Remington, Southeastern, Northwestern, Upper Iron University, ULL, Louisiana Tech, Southern University, Dillard, Xavier, Louisiana Tech, Louisiana College, McNeese, Grambling, Northwestern, ULL, Laola, Alcorn, FAMU, Louisiana Institute, Delta College. I'm also going to read, lastly, a response from a college. "Good afternoon. Thank you for letting us be a last-minute addition to Day of Hope event yesterday. We really enjoyed our time there and getting to meet so many students from East Baton Rouge Parish. Please keep us in mind for any future events."
Thank you. Next up, Ms., that was Ms. Kirsten. Next up, Ms. Ariane? Is that, did I say, all right, come on. Ariane Davidson, I'm sorry, I didn't say her whole name.
Good evening, I am Ariane Davidson. I am 21 years old, and I attend Southern University. And Day of Hope is really simple. It's about giving hope to every student around Baton Rouge. And that's exactly what we did. As you already heard, we had college and career fair. We had breakouts. We did have conversations. And I also, you know, heard that it was student-led. I cannot agree to that, because we did have a panel of people there. And I was on the side of Day of Hope. I was on all sides of Day of Hope, from attending, to speaking, to also volunteering. And every time I spoke, I was also a panelist. And we asked students questions, because in order to keep students engaged, you want to hear their questions. You want to get their questions answered. And so, that's what we did. And if you call that student-led, I'm sorry. But in order for them to pay attention and be engaged, we would like their questions to be answered. And being a 21-year-old, Day of Hope has, you know, helped me. It has helped me become who I am today. It has helped me find who I am today in everything that I do in the community, because I'm also in the community. I also help girls understand who they are and also find their identity. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Eugene Collins.
How you doing tonight? My name is Eugene Collins. I'm the president of Baton Rouge Bachelor, NAACP. And I echo Mr. Haley's sentiments. I believe that this is a powerful opportunity for both the district and community to come together to shore policies. I don't know if this reaches the level of litigation. But with that said, I want to not discount the feelings of anybody that came to that event and experienced trauma. Boy, remember, Wairr Jackson? You said, "This is all over the media, all over the country." And that's disheartening. But as I saw those messages all over the country, one thing that I saw missing were black faces. One thing that I saw missing was not a diversity of voices, and you can say what you want to say about that, but I didn't hear a kid from Glen Oaks High. I didn't hear a kid from McKinley High. I didn't hear a kid from Skylinville. And I damn sure ain't heard no kid from Southern La. And that's because, man, y'all didn't ask. Whether the event was right or wrong...
And watch your language, please, thank you.
I'm sorry. Whether the event was right or wrong, we had the responsibility of axing every kid. And we did not. I challenge you to not only do whatever you're going to do with this investigation, but also hold one of these town halls at Glen Oaks. Hold it at Skylinville. Hold it at those places and really get a mix of voices. And if those kids say that they were traumatized, let's do something about it. But let's hear from everybody. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ursula Chapman.
Hello, my name is Ursula Chapman. I speak, because I'm a parent of, my son used to attend 2911. He left Baton Rouge in ninth grade because he said the school system sucked. So, he went to Houston, Texas, where he's graduated from the University of Houston. I give all commends to Tremaine Sterling, because not only was it for the kids, he has extended it to the family. Even after my son left, he still can depend on Tremaine Sterling. I still can call him. I keep him on speed dial. And therefore, I continue and will continue to volunteer. And whenever he needs me, I'll be there. I looked, I didn't see a lot of the news, but I had to look, because everybody was talking about it. I have one young lady that was on the news. I videoed some of the event, and she's in my video, participating. But she gets on the news and says something totally different. So, I have a problem with that. I'm the one that helped get the kids off the bus and line them up. I'm the one that helped make sure they get into the auditorium good. I seen several tents far out, but I was inside. I did witness a lot, but it was a lot of positives. And I thank 2911 for what they instilled in, not just my son, but my whole entire family. I can call about my 31-year-old daughter, and Tremaine is going to give me some advice. So, I don't know what all was portrayed, but I know a lot was a lie. And no kid's cellphone was taken away. So, if they felt like they didn't want to be there, they could have called their parents to come get them. So, I just feel like it's a lot of BS, and I really feel like that, because our kids need hope. They do. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Ms. Ursula. Ms. Sybil Sneed.
My name is Sybil Sneed, and I attend Day of Hope. And I could say that it was good. I volunteer my time, and I help the kids get off the bus, tell them where to go at. And I talked with one parent after her son, they got through doing everything. And he was telling her how he enjoyed. But she told me she knew Mr. Tremaine, and that's not his first time going. He'd been gone for 10 years. And every time he go, he enjoy himself and come back with a good report. And I told her, "Thank you," because I knew the little boy. And I talked with another student mom, and she said that her daughter enjoyed it. So, me, myself, I had my son with 2911. And I got to say that he wanted to go back and participate with Mr. Tremaine. And that's why he keep asking me when he could get back into the program. So, I say that it's a good thing. But most kids, they might say no, but I think it's good.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sneed, Ms. Alexis Budiak, and Bonnie Kirsch.
Hello, I'm Alexis Budiak, and I attend Baton Rouge Magnet High School. The Day of Hope to my school was advertised as a college and career fair. On the flyer, nowhere did it say it was religiously affiliated in any way. However, you could Google the address and see that it was at a church. You could research the 2911 Academy and see that it's a religious academy, but there is no explicit evidence that it is in a religious nature. Also, even if an event is held at a church, that doesn't necessarily mean that it has religious implications, because churches can just be venues for events. So, in this event, the girls and boys were separated. That's something that has been spoken about multiple times on the media. While the girls were spoken to, they talked about suicide, domestic violence, and there wasn't mention of abstinence. That part wasn't harped on, but it was spoken about. Suicide and domestic violence should not have a place in public school events like this. Yes, it is important to talk about domestic violence. Suicide was spoken about in the context of bullying. And yes, we should talk about anti-bullying measures, but not when you're not prepared for it. I went to a college and career fair where I'm supposed to speak to colleges, and I'm supposed to learn about my future, not learning about forgiving my abusers. My issue with this event is not solely the religious additions, but mostly the lack of information given to students prior to the field trip and how we were unprepared of what was going to happen. We were not provided lunch. I believe that was mentioned at some point here. We were not provided the brown bag lunches, as I have been in every single EBR field trip for the past 15 years that have been in the school system. Tremaine Sterling has not ever attended Baton Rouge High, as I believe someone previously said that they have spoken, he has spoken to their schools before. He has never come to Baton Rouge High, so I had no knowledge of anything about him. I ask that you vote yes to the motion presented for a general counsel to conduct an investigation on this event. Because yes, some students did enjoy this event. Some students find hope in religion. Some students believe this was fun, and it was enjoyable. However, a lot of students did not as well. So, even if you did have some students that enjoyed it, I do think that it should be investigated. And I know that the 2911 Academy did not have intentional malice, but it was definitely problematic and should be spoken about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Star Matthews.
I have purposely, when speaking about this, not spoken the pastor's name, because it's not his fault. And I do not want ill to come on his group or what he is trying to do. The difference in what's happened over the years with what he's done in this one is EBR transported these children this time. Parents took them previously. So, that's the first thing. It's not on the pastor at all, because we brought him in. This is on us, this is on EBR. So, my comments are for EBR. Nothing against the pastor or his group. I'm going to read you two quotes. First one is my favorite Holocaust quote. "First, they came for the socialists, and I didn't speak out, because I am not a socialist." Then there's a whole bunch more. "When they finally came for me, there was nobody left to speak out." The second one, Dr. Martin Luther King. "An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." My son, a senior, a black senior, at Bel Air, a black school, because since no black students apparently were affected, except for the black students who were affected,
Okay, it's keeping it in order. Thank you.
was told on the stage and in line that he had to register to vote in order to get lunch. Because he was raised by me, he ignored it. And in his words, he went and found Coach Darryl, who made sure that all the children who were underage and did not want to register to vote, got pizza. Now, pizza is not a meal. Those children are supposed to get an actual meal from EBR. It is not Darryl's responsibility to feed the students of EBR. In fact, we cannot count it as an instructional day if we do not feed them. When we have had early dismissal days because of weather, we had to hurry up and rush them children through the cafeteria. So, the fact that we did not feed them a meal, are the seniors going to have to make this day up? Because that can't be counted as an instructional day. Like I said, I do not place any blame on any partners or vendors, though I have had conversations with many of them about the laws that were broken with the voting and how it cannot be held as, you can't offer something to get somebody registered to vote. All children, all children, have to be taken care of. Period. Whether you agree with them, whether you follow those beliefs or not, it doesn't matter. We have to take care of all, and this is a public school system.
Kenya, I don't have a last name. All right, Kenya London.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm coming on behalf of myself as a parent. I'm coming on behalf of the entire Day of Hope. My son has been a part of Day of Hope. True enough, there are several other people in the community that I know personally and not personally, who have came to me and has reported that they have really enjoyed Day of Hope. And they've enjoyed it on the inside of the things that have been done there that is not being done, that needed to be done at home. They didn't have a voice. They felt like they didn't have a voice to talk. But then hearing, coming to the Day of Hope, they found purpose of their life. They found reasoning for them to start communicating effectively. I disagree with a lot of things that have been said about this organization, not because I've been a part of it for the past eight, nine years, but just seeing other students from different cultures across the board coming to me or reaching out to me, because our number is always available, even during and after the particular event. It's never been broadcast as a religions event. Every event that every student has attended, they have been fed, they have had effective communication. No kid has been turned around. Anything that needed to be addressed during the event has been addressed. And when I say "has been addressed," I'm talking about somebody that felt like they needed to walk off to the side and have a conversation with an adult, whether it's a volunteer or a school attendee that's coming as a representative of the school. They have been pulled to the side and have used their voice. There are so many things that has been said again. I'm going to say this again, because I really am frustrated with all of the things that has been said that's not true. I do know that 2911 goes into every single school, speak with, and I know I'm over my time.
You're not over your time, you have a minute.
I know he goes into every single school, sit down with not just the principal. He sits down with the staff there. He finds out what are the needs that the school needs so that we can make sure that the organization is not just being ran on something that the kids does not need. Again, I'm going to emphasize on hope, because every child needs hope. There is a lot of things that is happening, not just in the home, but out of the home. Society is taking over all of our kids. A lot of our kids are being lost to society. So, there are a lot of things that needed to be discussed. But when it comes down to communication, the communication have been effective. I've heard several times where they say they can Google the address. Yes, that's true. But the parents also signed the permission slips. The parents had any questions regarding the, and it's not a field trip.
Okay, now, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Rakia Adams. It's a pretty handwriting, it's just tiny.
Good afternoon. So, I have a couple of things I'd like to address. I wasn't going to speak, because I had just given my comment, and I was just going to leave it alone. But just sitting back there, listening to everything that's being said, so I wrote a couple of notes down. So, food, they said brown bag lunches or pizza. For me, if I'm going out of school, I don't want a brown paper bag lunch. I don't want no sandwich on no wheat bread. I don't want that. The pizza was there, and I took home The pizza was there and I took home two boxes of pizza after the Day of Hope, hours later. So that's about the food. Now, if you ain't eat, you just didn't get in line. Or y'all, or okay, well, we gonna go right there to the chaperones. The kids, 2911 had a say-so about the event, not about what the kids was doing. The chaperones was bought and were not seen or found. They had to be gone and found because I went and found two chaperones for two different schools because the kids was acting up. Now, whether we was going outside or inside, I was inside. The college fair was giving to them twenty minutes. Most of the kids didn't even take it. They stood underneath the pavilion because it was too high. Now, if you didn't talk to the colleges, or if you didn't have enough time to talk to the colleges, you must have been one of the ones underneath the pavilion. The next thing is about the, the address. I mean, the address is a church address, and I do understand just because it's at a church, it doesn't necessarily have to be religion-based. But like has been said, Day of Hope has been going on for ten years. This is probably the biggest one and the one that was open to all, I mean, it's probably always been open to all schools, but it is, I feel like Day of Hope is basically for minority students. Minority students are the main ones going home and having no hope. Yes, if you don't have, if you have hope, you shouldn't have came to Day of Hope. It's a college fair, but you, it's, it's something, it had to have been something else because it ended at, I think I wanna say one o'clock. You had, was there for nine to one, you thought you was gonna be talking to colleges for that long? No, that wasn't gonna be it. I mean, and they were separated based off the speakers. Boys don't wanna hear about abusers, even though that they do. They may want to hear it in another context. You can't talk to girls the same way you talk to boys about hope. Period. Now, I don't know what y'all gonna do, but this, no, I say no.
Thank you. Faith Alexander.
Good afternoon, you guys.
Good afternoon.
My name is Faith Alexander. I attend the Southern Lab, Southern University Laboratory School. First and foremost, I just wanna thank Mr. Tremaine for everything he does in the community and everything he does for the youth. Personally, my experience at the Day of Hope and my peers at Southern Lab, we all enjoyed it. We all actually left with a sense of hope. We all actually left with the thought of, hmm, things will actually get better. There is actually a tomorrow. I saw, I began to see on social media how, you know, some of my, some of my other peers from different schools talking bad about the Day of Hope and, you know, just telling their experience. And so that day when I, the next day when I went to school, I saw some of my peers, they were like, this is not true. This is, this didn't happen. And I kind of felt like, what should I do? Like, how should I advocate, you know, the positivity? How should I let them know how other students felt about it? So I took a, I took a leap of faith and I went on Instagram and I use my platform to advocate the positivity of the Day of Hope. And I will read it to you guys. I said, and I quote, "Enough is enough. I will not sit here and watch this corrupt society rip and tear down what was meant to be an informative and beautiful event." In parentheses, the Day of Hope. Never was it ever mentioned that the Day of Hope would be anything about a religion, about religion or going to a church service. This was not mentioning, this was not mentioned on the news, which is the video that's above, nor on the permission slips or flyers. The Day of Hope, and I quote what was said in the video that was, that I posted above, a program that was, a program that started six years ago and reaches and connects students from all over the parish and sometimes all over the state and very randomly all over the country. Well, they came and received HOPE, H-O-P-E. That day, many students did, in fact, receive HOPE. Personally, I believe it was magnificent. From the motivational speakers to the other students from different schools uniting, none of the helpers, hosts, or Mr. Tremaine Sterling himself, for his religion or any student that did not feel comfortable with it. In fact, Mr. Tremaine Sterling himself told students, if, if they didn't feel comfortable with what was going on, they could leave and go outside and wait for their, for the other classmates in the buses. There were many coolers outside in the parking lot filled with water, and they had a concession stand for students to purchase snacks while they were waiting. Students were outside dancing, laughing, clapping, playing, and so much more. Every student had fun that day. Wisdom was received that day. Advice was given that day, and in fact, they did receive HOPE. Please stand with me and share your experience in the comments. We cannot let it end like this. We cannot let these students spread false information, and we cannot let them ruin something beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bonnie Kirsch.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Kirsch. I'm Alexis Buddyak's mom, who spoke earlier. Dr. Narcisse, I first want to address you. You mentioned earlier that you haven't seen any evidence of distraught students or students that didn't appreciate the event. If that's the case, you haven't looked very hard. My daughters, I'm sorry, my child, I'm trying to respect her pronouns. My child's account of what happened that day, her factual account as an attendee, has been shared through international media, along with her name and my name, which was not our intention, I wanna say that out loud, that I have only interviewed one time with the advocate despite my name being used on multiple publications around the world. So her name is everywhere, if, I'm sorry, their name is everywhere. If, if you wanted to find, you, you could have. My second comment is, I'm sorry, my next comment is, I would like to echo Mr. Collins' sentiment earlier about the disparity of voices in the media. I agree with them. Obviously, you know, my name has been everywhere, but I haven't seen African-American students being interviewed about this event by the media, and I do think that that's doing them a disservice. And there are students who appreciated and enjoyed and got something out of this event, and their voices have not been heard in the media. And I just wanna say publicly that I, I, I think that's, that's wrong and that's inappropriate. The media is clearly being biased in this case. The next thing I'd like to add is that I believe it was Mr. Lannis that mentioned earlier that the, the policy does clearly say that you don't discriminate on the basis of gender. But I'd, I'd suggest maybe to legal counsel that you update your policy a little bit to include gender identity, which is the norm in most of these policy statements today. I also noticed that discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation was not included. So just a comment that perhaps a review of that policy is warranted. Thank you, I appreciate that. Students were separated by gender at this event, not by their gender identity. And at no point were, students who don't necessarily identify as the gender that they were assigned at birth, at no point were they given the option to choose the group with which they identified to participate with. That is discrimination. I wanna skip, I'm running out of time, so I wanna skip some things. The school board has said at some point that all of the prayer and religious aspects of the event were student-led, and that's just patently false. There are multiple videos to prove otherwise. There are multiple, you know, there was a scripture read at the beginning of the event. So that's just not, not based in truth, and I think that's problematic to say that it is. It's not lost on me that the amount spent on this event or requested for this event was ninety-eight hundred dollars, which is right below the threshold of ten thousand that requires board approval. I think that's very interesting. Lastly, I want to, again, address Dr. Narcisse, that this is the third time something under your leadership has happened that has directly affected my family.
Your time is up.
May I list the three things quickly?
No, ma'am.
All right. That's fine. Thank you.
And, and the policy. Thank you very much. Catherine Beth Lee.
I'm a parent of an EBR student. I'm also in, in teacher in EBR. I have known about 2911 for, since the beginning. I have also contributed to it. I've also sat there and helped put it together at the beginning. My daughter has participated in Day of Hope. I have also attended Day of Hope. I've also seen students change their lives through Day of Hope. As a teacher in EBR, I have a gift where kids come to me, and this could be a gift and a curse. Children come to me and express a lot of personal things and a lot of things that they deal with, that they don't tell anyone. I help them through, I connect them with Tremaine, I use resources through the school system. And honestly, the school system just isn't enough, if we're gonna be real. Now, throughout all this, I understand some people may have been uncomfortable throughout the Day of Hope. It's not for everybody. I have been in places that I have been uncomfortable because it wasn't for me. But if I see a movement is being involved and it's changing people, especially with the crime that we have going on here, I just remove myself from it. Now, if you didn't like it, you didn't wanna be there, don't go back. That's all I could say. Because I've seen the work that it has done. It has grown. And as an EBR parent, if I sign that permission slip. Now, the church was not listed. The address was, but as a responsible parent, wherever my child goes and a name is not listed and an address is on there, I'm gonna Google and find out where my baby going, as a responsible parent. And that's all I'm gonna say about that.
Thank you. Kiara Adams.
I just wanna say that as a first-timer volunteer for the Day of Hope, me, myself personally, I enjoyed it, although it was for the students. But as a twenty or two-year-old, I'm still looking for something to push me to keep going. And being out there with the kids, and I wasn't inside, so I don't know what happened inside, but I was outside. And just all of the kids, the different races, the, just everybody were all coming together and everybody was smiling. And nobody wasn't like mad at each other or anything. I looked over one time and it was a group of kids from mentorship Baton Rouge High and Scollenville were filling up the coolers for them to have the water. But I was gonna do it, but I mean, they took it upon themselves to do it, to at least help everybody else. And I mean, if you was at the Day of Hope and you didn't receive anything, or it was a bad experience, or you don't understand what it was for, I feel like your reasoning for coming wasn't what it needed to be. Because the flyer, it says what it says, and I mean, if you just wanted to skip school, then you should have just stayed at home. But I enjoyed the event and I love what a positive mindset and I love feeling hope. Because I mean, seeing the kids smile, it was exciting for me because I'm like, they didn't, I don't know. But I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Reese Adams. Wait, I'm sorry, Reese. Hold up, boo. You went already. Yeah, okay. I didn't recognize because you had a different color and you was ready. You was ready to come get another three minutes, baby. We got you. That's it, three minutes. Madison Williams.
I'm a student at Baton Rouge High, and I wanna start off by saying, I honestly think it was a cultural difference. Like many people say, it was really targeted towards like minorities or children who are going through situations that a lot of children at Baton Rouge aren't going through. And when I know I'm somewhere and something's going on, and I'm like, mm-mm, I don't like this. I look at a lot of, I point out a lot of things that I shouldn't probably even point out because I'm like, I don't wanna do this, I don't wanna be here, and I just keep picking stuff out of it. And so I honestly feel like a lot of kids who had a problem with the event were doing that because they weren't comfortable at that point. They couldn't relate to what was going on. They probably, the people around them probably weren't even like, they didn't share anything. So I just think the problem shouldn't have really got this far because it was just like being uncomfortable, I feel like. And when it comes to like the, the gender thing and all that, the Day of Hope, I don't think they like were trying to offend anybody and, you know, separated by old girl and boy and, well, you should be here because you look like a girl and you should be here because you're like a boy. They just wanted to separate us by what they want to talk us about because as all, as females, we go through these things. And as males, they go through these things. There were some things, I didn't have a big issue on, but like the registering to vote, I'm not eighteen yet, so I didn't really see why I should have registered, but it wasn't a big issue to me. So the things that I didn't think I needed to bring to everybody's attention because it wasn't that serious. It happened, it was over with. I pretty much think that's it. I personally, I came out of it with a different perspective. I'm not gonna say I go through a lot, as a lot of those other kids do, but just being there kinda did make me have more of a, a open view on life in general. And seeing my peers, a, a lot of children really needed to be there. Like a lot of them, like, okay, at one point, he told us that he would pray for us or whatever, and he was like, if you don't wanna be in here, you don't have to be, I won't judge you. There were a group of, like a bunch of kids who left and a bunch of kids who stayed. And I honestly feel like those kids who stayed got what, you didn't, you didn't think what they were given. So I feel like the whole event was just, if you wanted what they was giving, like the paper said, a Day of Hope. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Alyssa Stevenson.
Hi, I'm a student at Baton Rouge High. I came into this event not knowing really what was going on, but I came in with an open mind. And I wanna say that the event wasn't like bad, but it wasn't open as it needed to be. I feel like it played a part in having a conversation that we need to have. Like, I don't agree with them separating genders because I feel like the topics that were talked about in the conversation were girls, was something that the boys need to hear because the women aren't the, like, the only people that are getting abused, but they also aren't the only people, they aren't the main perpetrator of abuse. So I feel like that was an open conversation that needed to be had. Also, I feel like this was needed for a certain demographic of students because two, like, schools that really commented on the bad stuff were Liberty and Baton Rouge High, who are known as diverse places, and they don't really have the conversation in the predominantly black schools that, like, gang violence and like prison, that, because I feel like this thing wasn't something, it wasn't what it needed to be for everybody, but I feel like it was needed for most people that were there. Because it wasn't just Baton Rouge High and Liberty there. There were students that aren't gonna go to college, but they needed to know that there was something out there. And for the speakers that were in the girl talk, I don't agree with most of them, but the one about suicide, I really agree with because she had the conversation about it being, like, it wasn't, oh, don't kill yourself. It's like, oh, don't like bully people or make them feel different because it really affects them, and that's something that not a lot of people talk about. I feel like there was a lot of good in this, but it's also opened up a conversation that needed to be had. So it's not, I feel like this was a good opportunity, and I feel like this should really keep going on, but it should also have some changes that could make it better. Thank you.
Emily Shenavere.
Thank you so much. I was not gonna share tonight, but I was sitting back and I just wanted to say something. I also want to say, Dr. Narcisse, I emailed you, and I just wanna say thank you for allowing us to give constitutions to the eighth graders across East Baton Rouge Parish for Constitution Day. Our organization, Moms for Liberty, did that. But I wanted to share today because our organization is an organization that believes in parental rights across the board, really no matter where people fall on a spectrum, okay? And I thought today, a friend of, a friend of mine and someone who comes to our Moms' Liberty meetings, her daughter goes to Liberty High School, and she had a very, very positive experience at this. And we talked about this when the news came out and just had some heart-to-hearts about it. And I just kinda, I'm just really speaking from what our organization believes in, and I believe that's parental rights. She did share that there was a permission slip that went home to parents that had a lot of information on that. And she said, as a mom, I read that. As a mom, I know where my kids are going and I'm very much aware of that. And so I'm really just, I just wanted to share because I do like to hear from the hearts of students behind. I think that's very important. I think it seems as though it really impacted them. And as, I think that a lot of students do need hope. I believe, and I'm probably one of the moms, that if I looked at it and saw that it was at a church, I'm also aware that churches a lot of times do open up their doors to do positive things for the community when it is a very non-religious event. That is something that is normal. I have seen that. Our church opens up its doors to do funerals and to do graduations and to do things, and our pastors are nowhere near even involved. So I'm very much aware of that, and I think it's really says a lot about the pastor to open up the doors just to serve the community. And I wanted to share that today. But really, as a heart, is that I wanted to, just in, in connecting to parental rights and what we believe as an organization, I just think that there's a way to do both. I think there's a way that you, we, we continue with transparency, maybe in some of the permission slips, maybe in some of the flyers, there's a way to really be very thorough about what's going on. Hey, there's gonna be this, there's gonna be that. And there's a way where parents can be maybe even more informed on that, where parents that want their students to go to a day that they're inspired and they're told that they matter, where those parents feel like that, that their child needs that in our community, that they are aware that that's available to them. And then if some, maybe if a parent is concerned, and it's very clear that maybe we just have a little bit more clarification to those parents. But I think there's a way that maybe moving forward, there's a way to do both. Let's keep inspiring our students, keep Days of Hope, keep inspiring students to go be above and beyond where they are, and then just keep parental transparency. above and beyond where they are, and then just keep parental transparency at the greatest height. Um, and so I think that could be maybe a win for everybody, so.
Thank you. Pamela Taylor Johnson.
Good afternoon. And I can just about ditto the parent that just came forth and spoke a minute ago, but this is the thing, I'm looking at your resolution, I read it, and maybe that's just that mind of mine. And I'm wondering, what does the resolution, the resolution is calling for something that probably should have been done before you even have an event? Having been and probably still is an educational lawyer, one would think the general counsel would look at events off-campus, to look at your permission slips, have something in place that have already pre-approved, and sign off on that, uh, in conjunction with whatever event you're having, whether you have a memorandum of understanding, or some event that you're coordinating to have the students to go to, for the same purpose that you don't have the ACLU saying, perhaps there's a violation of rights. Now, don't get me wrong, it sounds to me as if the Day of Hope, from what I'm hearing from the students, fantastic event. Kids enjoyed it, they probably needed it, and there probably need to be more things like that. But I'm concerned about taxpayers' dollars. I'm concerned about you guys. I'm concerned about us and the protection that is offered by that gentleman to you guys. Because the school board is the one will be sued if there's a suit, and we as taxpayers will be the ones that will pay for that. So I'm concerned about that to make sure those things are there. So I heard it said a little bit earlier, perhaps it's time to take a good look and do an overview of your policies and procedures. Not only just for that, what are your, your permission slips, there is nothing wrong with having off-campus events or school events, but must have them approved and/or, and not necessarily approved, the approval is from the superintendent, but the review is from legal counsel to make sure it doesn't violate anything. And that's all, and maybe the policies are old, and maybe you need to update them to comply with what is going on now. So the resolution, I really don't see how it's going to resolve your issue, other than to just have the council do what the council does. And if this is about whether or not you should have events that engenders hope, I think you should, and it says, does the kids say you should. But let the parents know with transparency what is going on, what the expectations are, and give them an opportunity to opt out if it's during a school day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, back to the board. Board colleague Blue.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I want to thank everybody who attended and gave testimony about their experience. I think it was helpful. Um, I'm not voting for the resolution. I'm confident in the, uh, response to any complaints, uh, that our administration has done and investigating, and we'll find out soon enough. I did hear a lot of positives about the event. Um, I think as a board, uh, we ought, we ought to be able to, uh, you know, wouldn't, even though there may be a lot of media publicity, uh, if the facts don't match up with what some of the hysteria is, then I don't think we needed to have competing, uh, investigations into it. I think, uh, the processes we have in place are sufficient, and, uh, I'm confident, uh, Mr. Shamblin will, uh, provide information to the board on his findings. In particular, uh, you know, that, want to make sure that the voter registration was done, matches, uh, you know, didn't violate any of the board policy that we have in place. Um, but anyway, for that reason, I'm not going to vote for this resolution.
Board colleague Howard.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I wasn't going to speak tonight, but first I want to, uh, say a few words to the students. This is what student advocacy look like, looks like. And I'm going to speak specifically to black students today because as a black man, that's my experience. There will be many times and many experiences in your life where your voice will be silenced. Continue to show up and speak up and tell your own story. You are the author and the narrator of your own life. No one, no news outlet, no CNN, no international report can tell your story like you can tell your story. My biggest issue with this whole thing, yes, as a district, I talk about it all the time, what we can do better as it relates to communication, what we can do better as it relates to protocol and procedures, but this entire story has been hijacked. And the voice of the majority of the students represented at Day of Hope has been silenced. Brother Sterling, keep doing what you're doing. Keep creating infinity spaces for us and by us, because this world has tried to silence our voice for over a hundred years. We need it. This city needs hope. This city needs inspiration, and as I leave this board, I hope that the students in this district continue to stand up for what they believe in and telling their own stories. You will not get that, the, the bright end of the stick many of the times. People in jobs, as you go on in college, as you go on in life, will try to silence your voice. People tried to have me hijacked from my position on this board because I wanted you to tell your stories. I've got many calls from my own resignation, many death threats because I wanted you to speak up. But to the people who don't believe in you, I believe in you. Your story matters, your voice matters. To this district, keep the same energy. We talking tonight about all students. All students are not graduating from schools in East Baton Rouge Parish. All students are not graduating with advanced credentials to go out and be great, to talk about and be the citizens that you want them to be tonight. Let's keep the same energy. The energy that was received from the Day of Hope, let's give it to our students who are reading on the third grade level and eighth grade. Let's give it to our schools where students are not having the same experiences at schools across town. Let's do it when we're talking about giving rights to this community to have district in power to vote. If we want to have energy about Day of Hope, keep that same energy throughout to the students. Keep doing what you're doing, keep fighting and keep telling your own story.
Thank you, Board colleague Howard. Um, I just want to first say that, um, I've always made clear when asked about, uh, this, uh, when asked about this and have even personally talked with Brother Tremaine Sterling directly, uh, I've always personally said that my concerns are not about 2019-11. I think it's an amazing organization that does amazing work. My concerns have always been and have always stipulated, as I express my concerns, around if allegations are true, then the district did not do its due diligence to avoid certain issues. I want to fur- further go on to say that not all black churches pray and believe the There are many progressive black churches who believe, um, that, that would have approached, um, who, who may or may not have taken different approaches. Again, not to say that 2019-11, uh, was improper in any approach that it took, but this imaginary monolithic black church experience does not exist. We are not a monolith. I find it concerning that at no point, if, and I've always maintained if, the concerns about the, about the way the program played out are true, then I find it very concerning that nobody had anything to say about safety of black girls and women. According to the CDC's National Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Survey of 2016-17, in their lifetimes, fifty-six point one of all female victims were raped by an acquaintance, thirty-nine point three by an intimate partner, sixteen percent by a family member, and only twelve percent by a stranger. According to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence in 2017, one in three women of all races and one in four men of all races have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. It's an issue important not just to women, but also to men. In fact, Women of Color Network Incorporated cites the National Crime Victimization Survey between 2003 to 2012. At the rate of four point seven per one thousand, black women had the highest rates of intimate partner violence compared to whites at three point nine per one thousand, Hispanics at two point three per one thousand. It's a black female problem. In 2019, Louisiana ranked number two in the nation when it comes to violence against women. The report also found that the rate of murders by women, of, of women by men in Louisiana is more than twice the national average. I am a victim of domestic violence. As a result, I had to raise my sons as a single mother because I refused to accept that being choked out and slammed on concrete in front of my children was my fault. I also refused to allow my sons to believe that it was okay for their father to put their hands on their mother, much less do the same in relationships of their own. It is a moral imperative that other young women know that. Whether they wait on the law for their husband or not, they deserve to be safe from abuse. One of our own pregnant teachers was murdered by her lover in front of her three-year-old child because she confronted him about keeping his wife a secret. How many Brookstown middle babies who knew her as a teacher and knew that she was murdered for that reason were present at Day of Hope? Again, to be clear, my comments in no way take issue with the amazing women who shared their powerful life experiences. However, there are best practices which are legal to help us address these important sensitive issues while, yes, incorporating much of the testimony of these women in the school system. If what we've heard is found to be true, could have done its due diligence to support and buttress that. I personally find it disconcerting that there's no uproar of concern about whether or not best practices to ensure additional trauma didn't take place for black girls. It's extremely, extremely alarming in and of itself, especially that it has been wisely pointed out that over eighty percent of the children in the school system and most of the children in the, in attendance at the event are children of color. Have we forgotten the words of Malcolm X? That the most disrespected person in America is the black woman. The most unprotected person in America is the black woman, and that the most neglected in America is the black woman. I am glad and I appreciate Brother Sterling and I appreciate 2019-11 organization, but it is fair to want to make sure we do a fact finding for the sake and safety of black females. Board colleague Ware Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You said that well. And, and I have to, um, also reassure you that I'm, I'm very grateful for ministry to our young people. I believe it's very important, and I know that many people were positively impacted. You know, I saw some of the, I saw some video and I could see, you know, that children, uh, young people were, uh, receiving the, uh, the word from, um, from the pulpit with, um, they were very receptive, and I appreciate hearts being changed. Uh, my concern around this is, is around the responsibility of the board and the superintendent. And you all know that we have been sued left and right for all kinds of things. And, um, you know, we keep speaking up for, um, due diligence so that we don't get caught in certain situations, um, beyond our control without our knowledge. Uh, I don't know what kind of due diligence took place ahead of time. You know, when I, when I read the stories, uh, and when I read the many stories, there were many things that just were repeated over and over, and, um, but there are certain things that we are bound by law to do and provide, and, uh, one of them, you know, is, is around the whether or not we provide food, whether they want to eat the food or not. You know, I've been on field trips and I know those little brown bag lunches aren't delicious, but we are bound by law to provide those things, uh, whether other things are available for them to eat or not. My concern is around the law and making sure that we are abiding by the law. And, um, you know, I, I appreciate the wonderful things that ministry brings, uh, to our kids, but I'm not sure that if that was the main purpose or was the, the main purpose as a school district to provide college and career information. Just looking at the, the promos and looking at the, um, marketing material, um, the first thing that's mentioned is college, college and career, uh, information. And, um, and I know it was called the Day of Hope, and it talked about choices, but we always talk about choices in education. Almost everything that we're doing now as far as our programming is tied to choices. So the language was a, a bit vague, and we don't know for sure what the mission was in that. The budget had no breakdown as to, you know, whether, uh, there was going to be more than, uh, I, I've heard that, I've heard some say that on some buses, there were, there, there were those brown bag lunches and some not. Uh, I don't know where child nutrition was in it. Uh, and as I said before, I would like to see whether we did our due diligence and did the things that we're required by law to do. And if not, we just need to make sure that we put things in place so that we're doing things correctly, so that we don't get the kind of backlash, um, from anyone, uh, not just the media, but especially our, our own customers. So I believe that it's very important for us to be transparent, and, um, we did ask in the, not in the resolution, but in the actual item itself, that there be, um, a forum, a public forum. I know that, you know, a lot of you got a chance to speak, and, uh, maybe there are more who would like to come forward and speak. Uh, I got a text from someone who was trying to get here in time and, and didn't make it here in time. So, um, I would appreciate us, um, protecting ourselves. Uh, I don't know if, whether Dr. Narcisse consulted with, uh, general counsel. Uh, a lot of the questions that, uh, Judge, uh, Pamela Johnson asked, I would really like to, to know, uh, what those answers are. And, and I believe in, in looking at this further, we will have those answers and we will put things in place to make sure that the district and our kids are protected.
Thank you, Board colleague. And with one second to spare. All right, seeing no other requests to speak from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
The motion fails.
Moving forward with item D1, redistricting. Update from general counsel.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. First Circuit Court of Appeal, uh, as part of my, my most recent update, which is online, has issued a judgment in the Singleton case reversing the trial court's ruling, which preliminarily enjoined Plan 22. So the effect of that is that Plan 22 is now the plan selected by the board going forward. Um, it's counsel's opinion that the 2014 plan is the plan that we'll continue to use for the current election cycle. Um, however, Plan 22 as approved by the board is no longer preliminarily enjoined, uh, as remainder of the case proceeds. Uh, Ms. Ware Jackson, I know you asked me for, um, an accumulation of costs. I wasn't able to update the memo before the meeting today due to, uh, policy requirements. I will do that after the meeting tonight. Um, I believe my June memo has all of the previous costs requested. I'll put that onto this memo. Um, the attorney's fees to date are fifty-two thousand ninety-eight dollars, um, and ten dollars and twenty-five cents in expenses. And we are exploring options for recouping attorney's fees under the current legal, um, allowances. So, um, I'll provide more information for the board at later point on.
So about an additional twenty, thirty thousand?
Yeah. I think it was thirty-two thousand, uh, was the last attorney's fee report back in June or July, so we're at, so it was about a thirty, about a twenty thousand dollar increase. And that was mainly due to the appeal.
And, and one other question that, uh, came earlier in the email around, um, whether we- around, um, whether we were, whether we should or should not have an AG look at, um, the legal counsel, especially with new people on board? Like, I believe we, that was done back in, was it 2003?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so state law requires, without going into too much detail, state law requires that school boards retain counsel via, retain special, um, and, and external counsel via a resolution. And that's a statutory requirement. The Louisiana Attorney Jones Office approves those resolutions. You're not required to re-up those. In fact, the benefit to this board has been that we have paid the same legal fee rate for twenty years. And so that's actually been a benefit to the board. There has been a request and, uh, for us to look at that, um, to review whether, uh, we need to bring something to the board for an increase for legal fee, for legal fees, but that's a separate issue. But it actually benefits us that we could do that via resolution. Boards are required to, to, to retain, uh, their outside counsel in that way. It allows them to operate, uh, if they're sued, they don't have to worry about a contract with a counsel around a particular case because it's a fifteen to thirty-day requirement that you respond to a petition. So that resolution allows, uh, us to operate, uh, using legal counsel as needed. And the AG's office has to approve those.
Even though the entity may have changed between the time that we, we signed it?
Yeah, it, it doesn't, by understanding is that does not matter. Um, the firm is still the firm that we are contracted, that we are, uh, that we retain via that resolution.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, firms add partners and reduce by partners all the time. It doesn't mean that you have to change resolution utilizing that firm.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate you checking into that to make sure that, uh, that we're on the up and up in, in every way that we possibly can be.
Yes, ma'am.
Because lord knows the afters.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no requests from the board, next meeting dates and announcements. One, Bridging the Gap Press Conference, to be held on October eleventh, two thousand twenty, twenty-two at nine o'clock AM here at the Central Office Boardroom. Some or all board members may attend. The next, uh, regular meeting of the board is to be held on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at five o'clock PM here at the Central Office Boardroom. We have a ribbon cutting that was, uh, put off due to COVID at Jefferson Terrace Academy. That will be on October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two at ten o'clock AM at Jefferson Terrace Academy. Uh, some or all board members may attend. And then a board workshop to be held on October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two from five to six-thirty at the Central Office Boardroom. And so move. I mean, yeah.